All right, I would like to call to order the April 1st Milford City Council meeting. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
Thank you. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Evans?
Here.
Vice Mayor Parrish?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Here.
That takes us to proceedings of a motion to approve the City Council meeting proceedings from March 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
That takes us to...where are we? That was financial statements. A motion to adopt the February finance report.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
All right, that takes us to public comments. Before public comments, I just wanted to clarify a few things about Claritoma Park because I know a lot of you here are here for that topic tonight. We have discussed this park several times over the past few years. In 2017, Section 3.45 of the Comprehensive Plan stated that Claritoma Park is currently underutilized in its current state. Explore new types of programming for this site which will generate more usage of this facility. As an alternative, explore the possibility of disposing of this park facility. So over those, since 2017, we have discussed that. An individual approached the city and acquired about purchasing and building one single-family home. The big question from council was, is the park used? It's not a park you can just drive by and see. In fact, most residents don't even know it exists. Our first thoughts were, let's find out from the residents if it's used. Otherwise, we could sell it and invest some money in other parks. We have heard many neighbors say it is used and we are listening. No decisions have been made yet about this park. So if you would like to come up for public comments, please state your name and address and try to limit your comment to three minutes. Anybody like to comment?
You said I have to state my address?
Yes, name and address, please, for the record.
Stephen Oliver, 637 Keystone Drive. I grew up in Milford, 25-years-old. I've lived here my entire life. I went through the public education system, Patterson. I grew up in the valley. I've literally been to every single park that this great city has to offer, including Claritoma. My sister lived in the neighborhood that was right there. I have fond memories of taking my nieces, my nephew, and doing what kids do during the summertime. What concerns me about this inquiry is the precedent that I think it may set. It's very dangerous, if you ask me. One, to sell an entire park for a residential development. Mind you, the gentleman that inquired to buy the park is a real estate agent. That seems a little odd to me. He would be more willing, honestly, to make a profit off of it than anything else. One person wins while the rest of us lose a public space, and I don't think that's right. The second precedent that I think it establishes is, I've read the transcript of the Parks and Rec meeting. You're wanting to use the revenue if the park is sold to build a pickleball court. It was contemplated or discussed. It wasn't confirmed. So you're using the revenue of an entire sale of a park to then invest it in a single, limited-use park. I don't play pickleball. My friends don't play pickleball, and truthfully, no offense to anyone here, I don't know too many people who do. Now, I-
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry. Is that better? All right. I don't need to repeat anything, probably. But the thing that kind of concerns me the most, truthfully, as I look deeper into the transcripts, is truthfully, the city manager. I kind of looked into your background, and I have complete respect for where you are right now. But the city manager doesn't live in Milford, isn't a citizen of Milford. He actually lives in Butler County, and he's a citizen of Hamilton. His only government experience is with Fairfield Township as a summer intern, and he's volunteered with Hamilton to pick up trash and plant trees, which is respectable. But he seems like he's communicating with FC Cincinnati about a possible soccer pitch that's going to go over the baseball field, which was the old Milford. It's a park that everyone utilizes. Dogs, frisbee, baseball, wiffleball, soccer. We all do it. I've lived here. I'm from here, and I'm a citizen of here. Milford belongs to the citizens. Think that FC Cincinnati should have any influence over the sale, use, or development of our public parks or green spaces. Just throwing that out there. The point that I want to make, though, is while we grow as a community, we should prioritize balance and sustainability. You add how many houses in a fiscal year? I've lived here my entire life. It's an insult to my intelligence to say that the city hasn't changed. There's houses everywhere. People are coming here, and that's great. But at the same time, we should protect, preserve the existing parks and green spaces that we have and to make a profit off of, if you ask me. So I think all proposed projects that are funded by public revenue should only be considered if the space can have multiple uses and serve all fairly. I read books. I like to play soccer. I take my dogs. It really shouldn't be that difficult to understand, if I may briefly-
Please wrap up.
Thank you. The reason Claritoma Park should be preserved, in my opinion, is that people use it. It would be a loss if we got rid of it. For the purpose of building a singular house, it would benefit one person and deprive us all of one. It establishes a very dangerous precedent to sell an entire park for a residential development. Last thing I just want to say, and I'll make it very briefly. The park, from my observation, serves the mothers, the childrens, the picnickers, the basketball players, the readers of Milford. It serves the neighborhoods. And I don't think that a gentleman who doesn't live here, or more importantly, a council that's supposed to preserve the welfare and happiness of the people, should sell a land which all that takes place, in my opinion. So that's really honestly all I have to say. But if I could, real briefly, the gentleman that you're selling the land to is a real estate agent, Greg Heiners. His name was mentioned in the Parks and Rec. It's public record. It says he's a real estate agent. That concerns me. That seems like a conflict of interest, if you ask me. He's not going to live there. He's going to sell it. And it would deprive us of a good public space, and we need to preserve memories, those that have been made and those have yet to be made. We need to keep it.
Can you please wrap up?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, would anybody else like to make a comment?
Good evening.
Can you hear me all right?
Thank you. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes. Don Hokum. Address is 871 Garfield Avenue. I'm sure have to be done. A lot of things got to be weighed and considered that aren't always popular. So the interesting thing I've heard tonight was that you did a study in 2017. And so in 2018, I bought the property that looks back over this park. And so I moved my office into the back of the house where I have a solarium. And that's where I do most of my projects and reviews and all of that. And in 2018, I would say, the estimation that was given to you in that report was accurate. Now, I get the benefit of working in my backyard every day. So it's a thing of God. So I say thank you for that. And I also want to say, thank that showed up here tonight. That's actually taken the time and the care and the consideration to come here. Because the community changed since then. In seven years, the Claritoma that I wasn't allowed as a child to go play in when I lived up on Wallace Avenue, yeah, yeah. Dad said, "No, you can't go down there and play with Claritoma kids." Is now the place my brother, who lives in LA, is saying, "I think I'd like to buy a house in Claritoma." And part of the reason was, he saw the different parks. And we have a really nice park next to a really nice maintenance facility. You all did a wonderful job building it, and thank you. And it serves a certain age of child. And yet, what I see in the park that you're considering selling are most of our kids that get into their double digits. So they're not the kids that are playing on jungle gyms. They're the kids that are shooting hoops. And they're the ones going down there. And the mothers and the fathers with the strollers are pushing them down there and going down there. So I would question today whether, if you really did a study, whether you'd find that that was correct. Okay? So that's the first thing. Second thing is, I measure the easement. You're going to create a flag lot. And most municipalities and most planned developments today, they bark at flag lots. They say, "We don't want flag lots." And the reason is, is that you have a 12-foot-wide, you know, crossing that you're going to put a road on eight-foot wide. And so you're leaving two feet on either side to try and get water in and sewage to flow out. It's very difficult. But it's also difficult to get a fire truck back there. So you're actually going to create a situation where we already have some pretty intense housing, and we're going to have to put more in and/or create other easements to get in there. And that's a real concern long-term for that. So I would say, across the street is someone who's trying to develop a lot. And then you have land down there that also you can't use anymore that are ball fields because of the problem that's there. So I would put your efforts maybe to looking to develop that land for the benefit of the city. Leave the park alone.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Somebody else like to make a comment, please?
Hello again, everybody. I spoke in front of this council a few months ago, but for those who don't remember-
State your name and address.
My name is James Gallagher, and I live at 5505 Timber Court. But I come down to Milford all the time, and I actually started an internship a few months back with the Milford Miami Township Chamber. So I'm down here all the time. And one of the great honors that I have of being the Chamber intern is talking to many different people in the community. And I've gotten to gauge a few aspects of the community that I think could help, instead of selling the park, redevelop it and revitalize it into something that the community would actually use. For starters, there isn't really a lot of signage to indicate that that is a park, whereas all the other parks in the city have some kind of signage that says, "Hey, this is a park." It's very clearly defined. I mean, Five Points has those big archways now. I mean, implementing something as simple as that onto that park would probably be beneficial and draw more people in. I will also say that the park does add value to the properties around it, and rezoning it and putting a house on it would actually depreciate the property value of all the properties around it. Because parks draw in people that want to live in communities and have those spaces that are there. That being said, in Parks and Rec's committee, a bunch of people had public comments then, and they said that they would like to see the park be revitalized. They say, "Safety used to be a concern, and it still probably is." So being able to address those concerns and, you know, do some landscaping things, maybe move some things around and make the space more multipurpose as well. And yeah, that is all I have to say.
Right, thank you very much.
Mayor. If council would entertain me for one second. We've heard you, and I don't, you know, not to speak for my colleagues on council. First of all, we never, ever came to a decision that we're going to sell this park. With that being said, I would like to make a motion that the City of Milford does not entertain nor consider selling Claritoma Park. That is my motion.
I'll second that.
Ms. Evans?
Talking like currently?
Yeah, currently, we are not entertaining.
Yeah, I'm not saying 10 years from now. Someone's going to come back and say, "You said you weren't going to sell it 10 years from now." Or 15 years from now or 20 years from now. If things change.
From 15 years. Correct, my wrong. Our law director, I can make this motion that is effective today that we are not entertaining nor consider selling Claritoma Park.
That does not bind us from, I won't be here, but future councils-
Both correct.
Okay. Then yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Motion has passed. The motion passed, so we will not be entertaining or considering selling.
I just want to clarify something else for the record. Mr. Gunderson, this really has nothing to do with Mr. Gunderson. This conversation took place way before he got here. And he was not part, it wasn't his idea to bring up to sell the park. He also doesn't live in Butler County. He lives in Miami Township, only because he couldn't find a house in the city. Because we're so popular here, there weren't any houses for sale. So, and they also clarify, the FC Cincinnati, that's partly, I guess, on me. Like, I've been asking them for it because I think that they're a really neat amenity to have for our community. And if they will build it for us for free, I think we should take advantage of that. So I've been the one considering or talking to FC Cincinnati about building us a soccer field. I think that would be very cool, since this is their home base. So, thank you all for coming. Is there anybody else that has a public comment? Good. Just please, again, state your name and address for the record.
Katie Tuller. I'm at 27 Apple Lane. This is my daughter, Avery. And since, I'm so glad you guys aren't planning on selling the park anymore. What I would ask, though, is that we have tried to take her to the park multiple times. It has been a forgotten park. It gets mowed, that's it. Things need to be updated. We would love to visit it more and for her to be playing on the equipment more. But it is just very dated. Again, like I said, I think City of Milford has pretty much forgotten it, and I would really love for it to be restored.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to make a comment? Anybody else have a comment? All right, well, that takes us to city manager report. Mr. Gunderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Can everyone hear me? Okay. I wanted to give an update as it relates to the IT companies. We've received three quotes now, two of which came in today, so we have those under review. We're looking to make a decision here shortly. As of 4:30 this afternoon, we have officially hired a water department supervisor. So we are extremely excited to have Zach, Mr. Rob, part of this team. He has worked here previously, but we believe he is going to be a phenomenal leader for the department and will help guide us to our future goals. So I wanted to welcome Zach to the team. As of yesterday, the city did submit a remedial action plan, R.I.P., to the Ohio EPA for the Old Milford Marathon Station, the parking lot next to Harvest Market.
If you could please keep the noise down, thank you.
So the proposal is under review by the Ohio EPA, and they will determine next steps. City staff held a discussion with Duke Energy and the subcontractor related to the water line, or excuse me, gas line project along Short Lila and the surrounding streets. We've received quite a few concerns regarding that. We have addressed and some of the other relevant damage. So those will be replaced. The sidewalks will be replaced to the extent in which it was previously. So if there was a section of the sidewalk, that will be replaced with new concrete. They're waiting for the concrete plants to open up before they start that work. But that will be, each section that is addressed, they'll replace it following the completion of that. So I will continue to keep council in the loop on that and monitor any of the issues that come across. On March 24th, I attended the Claremont County Commissioners Meeting. That simply served as an introduction and to provide a brief update on city projects and priorities. I have also attended the Center for Local Government Leadership Academy, the first session. First session was simply Local Government 101, and we had a couple of case studies that challenged our leadership abilities and problem-solving skills. Lastly, I wanted to, or second to last point, we've hired quite a few employees, code enforcement officer, a city planner, our water department supervisor, as well as a finance consultant. So we're really trying to evaluate our efficiencies and effectiveness and really try to improve our services. So I think we have a great team.
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing.
Could you please keep the noise to a minimum because we can't hear through the Facebook and the TV feed? Thank you.
And I will be out of the office April 10th and 11th. And then lastly, I wanted to wish my beautiful fiancee, excuse me, a happy birthday, so.
April Fools?
Yeah. So that is all I have, unless there's any other questions.
Questions? All right, that takes us to Chief Mills and the police report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Don't have a formal report for you tonight, but I do- Facebook, I'm excited to announce that we have been selected as the Agency of the Month at the Greater Cincinnati Police Museum. The museum is the only regional museum in the country that cover federal, state, local, and private agencies in southwest Ohio, northern Kentucky, and eastern Indiana. This is pretty neat. TripAdvisor ranks the museum at the very top of their list of 407 things to do in Greater Cincinnati. The museum's located at 308 Reading Road, downtown Cincinnati. Their hours are limited because they're staffed entirely by volunteers. They're open Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays from 10 to 4. You can find more information on their website at police-museum.org. Secondly, you can see I'm proudly wearing the Autism Awareness Puzzle piece tonight in recognition of Autism Awareness Day tomorrow, April 2nd, and also in recognition of National Autism Awareness Month throughout April.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to Chief Baird and Fire and EMS.
Good evening, everyone. I have just a short report also. Most of what I was going to talk about is covered in the city manager's report, so you can peruse that. But just a couple of things I did want to mention. First off, two of our cadet firefighters, Braden Colton and Nicholas Stone, who are students at the D. Russell Lee Vocational School, participated in a program at their school. And part of their, it was a contest. Part of that contest was to teach CPR and first aid to a community group. Through some contacts, we brought a group in, Boy Scouts or Scouts of America group from one of the local churches, based out of one of the local churches. And they did the CPR class, bile counts. It was very good. They did a great job. They won their contest, Skills of America, I believe is what it's called, at the vocational school level, at tech school level, and they went on to win the national prize as well. And part of that was, part of that was as a result of the class they taught at our place. Braden and Nicholas are just really great kids. Both of them are in their EMT classes currently, and I can't wait to get my hands on them. So I just wanted to mention what a great job that they did. Just a couple more quick things. You probably, if you haven't already seen it, we have a Wayne Township ambulance that we're using as our spare ambulance. We are having problems with one of the ambulances that's going to take a little bit of time to get corrected. It's an electrical issue. It's one of those gremlins that we just have to chase it out. Comes with new vehicles. We will eventually get it taken care of. But thank you to Wayne Township Board of Trustees for letting us use one of their spares to help take care of things in the city. And it's actually been on several runs in the two weeks or so that we've had it. And other than that, I really don't have anything else to report. So any questions for me? Have a long night. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you. That takes us to council comments. Anybody on council?
Yeah, I'd like to make one. I'd like to just take a minute to thank everybody that showed up tonight. I know it's not easy to always get to meetings in the times that they're scheduled, but I think this is a great example of showing true democracy in action. And it also shows when issues matter and you show up at meetings, things happen not always the way that you want, but it gives you a better chance. I think tonight was a great example. You guys spoke. We heard you. So again, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who took time out of their schedule to show up tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just want, again, right there with Christopher, I love it when we have people come to meetings. So thank you all for coming. Also, I want to remind everybody, on the 24th, on Friday, we are having our Arbor Day celebration at 4 o'clock. We are going to be honoring a tree in our city that is very old, as well as celebrating our heritage and history in the city of Milford. We are partnering with the Milford Historical Society. So I invite everybody to come down and enjoy the festivities.
Riverside Park.
Park, yes, at the pavilion.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion pursuant to, in accordance with Section 3.051 of the Milford City Charter, 121.22G1, to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual, unless the public employee, licensee, or regulator requests a public hearing. And I also have a second reason for executive session, which would be pursuant to, in accordance with Section 3.052 of the Milford City Charter, 121.22G2, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes or for the sale of property at competitive bidding if premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal, private interest is adverse to the general public interest.
Do I have a second?
Second. Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
And we will be returning to conduct the rest of our meeting. We'll have a committee of the whole meeting, and there will be another public comment section during that time. So we will be returning. Into the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
All right, that takes us to our committee of the whole meeting. Do I have a motion to enter into the committee of the whole meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
All right, so I will call to order the committee of the whole meeting. Jackie, will you take the roll call, please?
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Here, since this is roll call. True. Good point. Just pointing it out, everyone.
All right, that takes us to public comments. So if anybody from the public wants to make a comment about any of the topics regarding committee of the whole meeting, you might do so now. Please state your name and address for the record. Anybody want to make a comment?
Steve Myers, 818 Walnut. I know most of the people here. Some I don't. I've been a long timer here in town. I was looking to hear some lively discussion. I got in, and I understand that you cut to the chase and that the park is going to, what's the final analysis on the park?
It's going to stay a park?
Okay, good.
Currently, yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public like to make a comment? Please state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Yes, my name is Lee Hatter, and I live at 29 Apple Lane. One of my questions is, is we agreed not to sell the park, but for how long?
I mean, I don't know if we can give you an answer for that.
Yeah. It's not going to be tomorrow or the next day?
No, no, no.
Okay, and it'll be held about that? Okay.
Yep.
I just want to make sure of that. The other question I have is, I've been battling on my street for the last 12 years and before that. My grandmother was battling with the city for the 50 years prior to that. And it has to do with the city water runoff on our street. Our street is the only street in the city that does not have curbs and does not have proper water plugs, and it doesn't have, you know, proper drainage. But yet, we're required to pay a bill every month, you know, for the rain runoff. But it's, it's ridiculous. Every time I bring it up, we're working on it. It's on the list, it's on the list. I need to know, when is this list going to include this? Because I'm tired of dealing with it. You know, every time it rains real bad, our street floods. And all I get is a bunch of, well, we're working on it, we're working on it. We have two fire plugs, one out on Garfield Avenue. We have one all the way at the very end in the cul-de-sac on Milford, on Apple Lane. And if a fire was to break out, things would burn down before they even got the hoses hooked up. Because the hoses is not anywhere around, I mean, the fire plugs is nowhere around to hook into. As far as the water runoff, they kept saying, well, it was, it was worked on, it was worked on, it was worked on. It's never been worked on for over 30 years. It's, if you look in that one drain that's there, out in the middle of the street, in the cul-de-sac, the street is 18 inches higher than it was years and years ago. And all they did was just keep adding more pavement to it instead of fixing the problem. And they haven't fixed the curbs. And I don't know what my next step is going to be. I guess go door to door and put all of our bills into an escrow account until it's fixed. You know, we're asking for it to be fixed, and fixed not next week, but I don't want to wait another six months. Something's got to be done.
Right, thank you. We do have new eyes, I guess, that can take a look at that, and.
You know, we've got them expensive homes that they encroached upon our properties, right behind my house. And it was a mess when the rain come down off of Wallace. It's, the drainage that they finally put in, that I showed them what needed to be done to get it in there, they fixed that, and it's helped somewhat, but there's still water runoff in my backyard. And it never used to do that.
Well, thank you for coming and sharing your concerns again. Like I said, we have new eyes, and maybe we can take a look at Apple Lane and see.
I would like to hear something from you. I would say within 30 days. I want to hear something from somebody in 30 days. You know, I'm tired of just putting it on a list, putting it on a list, and I get nowhere with it. And it's, every place else in town has got brand-new curbs. They've put brand-new curbs twice, three times, in different areas of town since things have been done on my street. We've never had curbs.
Right.
So, I don't know what to do.
East Milford doesn't have, the majority of East Milford doesn't have curbs as well, Mr. Hatter.
Yeah.
So I don't want you to think Apple Lane's not, Apple Lane is not the only street that doesn't have.
The rest of Cleratoma looks real nice. They got brand-new curbs and brand-new water runoff and all that stuff. It looks really nice.
Yeah, the whole neighborhood behind City Hall does not have curbs either.
Well, I've been asking for this for a long time. And I guess the only way to do it, if I don't hear nothing, is to go door to door.
Right, well, thank you for your comments. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public like to make a comment?
Stephen Oliver, 637 Keystone Drive. Real briefly. To address the information that I presented to the council regarding the city manager's address, I'm going ba, or not the address, his location, where he resides, I'm going based off of the Ohio Secretary of State voter database. Says he's active and registered to vote in both other counties. So not trying to misinform anyone, but I'm going off with the Ohio Secretary of State.
Things have changed since then.
Yep, I got you, I understand. And I welcome him to the community, truthfully. The thing I want to point out, truth, what concerns me, I played soccer my entire life. I enjoy soccer, but I don't want FC Cincinnati all over Milford. The way that they came in here the first time around, we haven't forgotten, was pretty shady. There was a lawsuit about it. Closed-door meetings, no public concerns or dissent. The point I'm making is, on the transcription of the Park and Recs meeting, it said that Benjamin Dash met with the FC Cincinnati Foundation to look at potential sites. They looked at Riverside 2. Riverside 2 is the baseball field that's by the Legion. Today, I went to every single park in Milford to talk to people. I bumped into a good friend with his dogs. He said that there were people in black Jeeps in the corner of Riverside 2 that were making measurements on the field. Why are people making measurements if no discussion, no, nothing has been talked about? It seems like they're jumping the gun just a little bit here. I'm not trying to be that citizen, but I'm sort of smelling something a little fishy. With all due respect, FC Cincinnati seems to try to influence Milford in giving up their green spaces. That's not going to happen, at least while I'm, I'm here. We're all citizens of this city. FC Cincinnati is FC Cincinnati. They want to build a soccer pitch, whatever it is. Go into Hamilton County, go into Cincinnati, do it there. You're already here, FC Cincinnati, and we don't want you here, personally. This is my personal opinion. I don't want you here. But it's a project for 2026 for the World Cup. Last I checked, the World Cup's not being hosted in Cincinnati. So I don't know why this project is related to the World Cup and to that. We're talking $200,000 investment for high-grade turf. You're going to dig up the natural soil on the baseball field, and you're going to put in artificial turf. The field, the field is used for many reasons, Mayor Evans. With all respect, it's used for many reasons, and to allocate it to just one specific purpose. With a profit-making organization like FC Cincinnati, I don't like that. No one likes that. So with all due respect, please reconsider any proposals by FC Cincinnati. I get you want economic growth in Milford, and I do as well. But I don't want to have that by selling out our green spaces.
All right, thanks for sharing your concerns.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public like to make a comment? All right, that takes us to, I guess we'll skip the first one because that's already done. Mr. Benjamin, I'll turn it over to, Mr. Gunnison, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so we'll skip Cleratoma Park. Second item on the Committee of the Whole is the Land Bank Board of Directors. Per their, their bylaws, the city of Milford needs to have a representative, being the largest municipality. Due to us having one of the employees leaving, I would like to be on the board. So I just simply need a resolution to allow me to sit on the board.
So I'd make, I'd make the motion to appoint Benjamin to be our. All right, so then I would, I would make a recommendation that the committee authorize the law director to draft a resolution appointing Benjamin W. Gunderson to the Claremont County Land Bank Board of Directors.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Agreement for General Health Services with Claremont County. This is our yearly contract. Due to this being above my spending limit, I need counsel to recommend an ordinance for us to engage with Claremont County Health Services.
I would recommend that the law director draft an ordinance authorizing the city of Milford to execute a contract with the Claremont County Health District Advisory Council for the provision of public health services for 2025 and 2026.
Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Jay Stewart Consulting Agreement. Due to us having a vacancy in the Planning and Zoning Department, I have, I'm recommending counsel engage with Jay Stewart. He's, he's a wealth of knowledge. He's done multiple zoning codes, comprehensive codes. He's a consultant for a couple of communities up in Cleveland. And I think he is, once again, a wealth of knowledge, would be an excellent addition to our team. So due to this being, once again, above my spending limit, I would like counsel to recommend an ordinance to hire Jay Stewart for our zoning and planning needs.
I would make a recommendation that the law director draft an ordinance authorizing city manager to enter into a professional planning and zoning support services agreement with Jay Stewart.
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Raptillis Rate Study. We have had several, we've had discussions stemming back to December regarding our utility rates with both water, wastewater, and stormwater. To ensure that we are staying up to date on our rates, we are going to hire a third-party consultant to conduct a study and make a recommendation to counsel for those rates. I, I did reach out to the Center for Local Government, who sent out a survey to municipalities that are part of the Center for Local Government to request consultants. And Raptillis came back with numerous municipalities recommending them and with high regard. I've had several meetings with Raptillis to, to discuss the timeline and in the process. So Raptillis contingent on counsel approval would, once again, conduct a study for water, wastewater, and stormwater to evaluate, evaluate our rates and provide a recommendation. So due to this being above my spending limit, I am requesting counsel's permission to engage.
I would recommend the law director draft an ordinance authorizing city manager to enter into a financial study and rate plan agreement with Rappel Test Financial Consultants, Inc. for the amount of $29,000.
Second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Thank you. And the last item on the agenda is amending Kirk Jewelers Development Agreement. Kirk Jewelers, Jewelers has asked for an extension based off of conversation council has granted me the ability to work with the developer and discuss next steps. So there's really no further discussion at this point regarding this.
Any other questions? All right, that takes us to Mr. Pacheco's.
I'd make a motion to adjourn the Committee of the Whole and return to normal council meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Now that takes us to new businesses, and new business, and then Mr. Pacheco's.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2025-661, a resolution appointing Benjamin W. Gunderson to the Claremont County Land Bank Board of Directors. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Milford hereby appoints Benjamin W. Gunderson to the Claremont County Land Bank Board of Directors.
Oh, a motion to adopt. That was a short one for you.
Second. Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
You guys don't pay by the word anymore. Ordinance number 25-347, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional planning and zoning support services agreement with Jay Stewart. Section 1, the council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into a professional planning and zoning agreement with Jay Stewart to provide such services per the attached agreement. The terms and conditions of this agreement are hereby incorporated by reference pursuant to and in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2, under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-347, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional planning and zoning support services agreement with Jay Stewart.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-348, an ordinance authorizing the city of Milford to execute a contract with the Claremont County Health District Advisory Council for the provision of public health services for 2025-26. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The council of the city of Milford, Ohio pursuant to Section 3709.08 of the Ohio Revise Code and charter of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager enter into an executed contract with Claremont County District Advisory Council whereby the city of Milford shall pay to the Claremont County General Health District the sum of $29,031.38 for one year of public health services beginning May 1, 2025, through May 1, 2026. Said total sum to be payable semi-annually in May and November. The public health services to be provided under this contract are required by the Ohio Revise Code and the Ohio Sanitary Code and all other authorized services similar to those which the Claremont County General Health District provides for its district. The terms and conditions of said contract shall be and are hereby incorporated herein by reference pursuant to and in accordance with Sections 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2, pursuant to and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-348, an ordinance authorizing the city of Milford to execute a contract with the Claremont County Health District Advisory Council for the provision of public health services for 2025-26.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.[1687.58]